Meeting to order. I'll call the meeting to order on me planning zoning commission. August twelfth, twenty twenty four. We have no offense to see, we do have a forum, we have four members present. But any changes or addition to the agenda?
John?
No, yeah, no additions.
Hello, hi Greg. I'm sorry, Mr. Goat.
Yep, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad.
Uh, the minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty four, any corrections? I'll make a motion, we accept them as presented, so. Any discussion, all in favor, I. unanimous? Uh, any audience of citizens? Anything under unfinished business? No new business, we have a special, uh, before we get into this, I wanted to talk to you, John. Wouldn't this be a site plan modification, or is it absolutely a special permit? What criteria is? I triggered the application for. For the Kia dealership.
Uh, that's a good question, um. Greg, I think we probably hadn't talked about this, but yeah, the the planning and zoning commission. Moved a number of. Non-residential uses from the special permit to the site plan.
I think it's section, section thirty one point two point six. It's a public hearing if an automobile dealership it butts a residential.
Residential alcohol, there you go.
That's.
Yep, thank you, we did talk about that, yeah.
All right, then, then, um. You're welcome to speak to this, but I think we're just, uh, Mr. Goad, I think we're just setting a. A date, the public hearing, uh, so the, the soonest we can realistically do that will be September ninth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, yep, that's fine with me.
Anything you'd like to say on a preliminary, preliminary basis?
Uh, well, all's really what it is in a nutshell is right now, it's, you know, it's Columbia Ford in Kia. And they're under mandate from Kia to separate the dealership from the Ford dealership, so. We're basically constructing a, a, a showroom on the side of the Ford building, uh, where Kia will exist. So it's in the parking area and all that.
Okay. Uh. All right, so I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for this special permit application to. September ninth, twenty twenty four. Any discussion, was it bigger? Okay, we'll see you then.
See you then, thank you very much, have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Um, so if, if, um, Mr. Tabor has recused himself, will we have a forum anymore?
No, well. I thi- I think he's, yeah.
Well, before you, before you even said, um, why didn't you not say anything in abstaining?
But, but this more of a, I mean, if you will. Probably the end of the application or where, I guess, okay. But my, my point is, um, I'm not in any big hurry to. Have it be approved if there's not a calendar ticket. So, I mean, we could take it to the next meeting. But I, but, but I did have some discussion. Outside of that. Agenda, whether I sit in the audience or not, that would be. A few, we can take it to go next and then we meet.
Okay, then let's table this, let's, um, table this until, until our next meeting. So we don't run into any issues with regard to. Having a quorum, because I think it's clear. You, you intend to recuse yourself.
I do, okay, I do, is there, is there a clock ticking on this though?
No, I, um. Well, so it, uh, I'll, I'll, the, the farm winery. I'm trying to pull up the special permit criteria. Um. Yeah, so this is under section. Twenty one point five point four. Um, I'll share my screen. And if you let me, can you, can you see this? Probably small.
Well, we're not going to take any actions, just.
No, but I just wanted, so this is, this is the end of twenty five point five, or twenty one point five point four, so, um, a farm winery. Is a special permit use, it says special permit approval. Is for a maximum of two years. The applicant shall submit a request for extension of the permit of for the, from the commission every two years to ensure compliance with the conditions of the original special permit. Um, I think it's technically been a little bit more than two years since Walt's last, um. Extension. There is, I, I mean, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not your attorney, and I wasn't around when this was, was passed, but, um. I mean, a special permit is a, a, a special permit should in theory run with the land and should be valid unless something is. You know, substantially changed. So, you know, this regulation, I think, is meant to ensure. That, you know, con- conditions are basically the same and nothing substantial has changed. Um, really more of a, a, a check-in than, you know. A validation or an invalidation of the permit, but, but that's the rule is, is two years. Um. Uh, you know, I, again. There, there is not, it's not really clear what, what would happen if. It's not renewed precisely on the two-year schedule. Um, you'd probably have to go through some kind of finding to. That it, conditions have changed and, and the permit is no longer valid for one reason or another. Um, but, you know, I think, uh, for practical purposes, it, it can probably. It can probably wait a couple of weeks.
Yeah, let's wait till our next regular meeting, John, I question. Whether it's even legal to have a special permit that expires after a certain amount of time.
That's my concern, too.
Yeah. You know, I, at the time, I don't know why we agreed to it, or put that in there. Uh, I didn't question it at the time, I wish I had. Um, I just. There was no opposition to this that I, I was aware of, I, I'll ask Walt not to even comment on it, but. On. I just. You can't ask somebody to, to make an investment in an infrastructure improvement based on a special permit, knowing that two years later, they might not be able to. Use it, it's almost like a grandfathered use at that point.
Yeah, and I mean, uh, it's, you know, I think it's, it's generally, uh, you know, the only, the only sets of, um, uses that I'm aware. That are a special permit that require. Um. Kind of, you know, an annual or a, you know, a, a biannual, um. Check-in are, are usually extractive, so if you've got a, you know, a gravel operation where things are sort of constantly changing. And people are authorized, you know, to be extracting certain phases and things like that, that's a special permit that gets a, a check-in, but something like this. If, if, you know, Walt is, you know, unable or unwilling to, to meet the conditions or any other, you know, winery owner. Uh, that becomes really an enforcement matter, not a. Commission check-in, you know, um, like any other.
So haven't seen any awareness of any issues like that, let's just informally, we can't, because we're not a, a, a quorum without. Walt is likely going to recuse himself, and that's a subject of discretion. Uh, we can't really take any formal action with regard to this, but I see no reason not to let it continue, and if. An issue comes up. Um, I'll ask our zoning code enforcement officer, please reach out to me so that. When you can get a perspective on it, but. We'll go from there, so we'll continue this for our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to have further discussion when we have more people, because this, this concerns me how it was written. Sure, am I recused or?
No, you're, you're, you're recusing, we were gonna take action on, you're not recused on a general discussion, so.
So from a whole perspective of, if business or for such, I can tell you that when we did this. I did a lot of thought, but I never thought it would be a. Um, not as, as, as you get into it, and the biggest problem is remembering whether or not you did it, here I am, now, now I'm looking back and I'm saying, what? January. It was March, I went back and we, we renewed it, so just from an aggravation perspective. Um, that, that's reason to at least. You know, question it, but. Um, I never, I just never thought it would be an issue, um, and it goes to. Um. Liquor licenses. It overlaps with the liquor license, I can't, I can't get a liquor license for that, it's zoning approval. I get zoning approval from the V E O, Z E O says I have approval. My, but my, and my liquor license allows me to. Sell alcohol well beyond that date of that renewal. And it's, so it's just like this overlaps of, of legal, um. There's a lot of reasons to, to revisit this. Wow.
Okay, well, Justin, for this subcommittee, let's. Put that on the list.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
And there, there are, yeah, I mean, not to, not to gild the lily here, but there are a number of, when Walt and I were looking through. The, the special permit criteria for wineries, there's, there's a lot that. Doesn't make a lot of sense, practically speaking, um, one being. I think there's like a thirty day requirement, or at least like a three-week requirement. In advance of any event over a certain size that, that needs to be reported to the zoning office, and of course. You know, I'm sure, I don't know how often this happens, or if it happens, Walt, but you know, there are certain times when you probably get a booking. That's less than three weeks out. Um, and, and that, you know, that, that presents an, on, uh, an impossible, um, compliance condition. Uh, and then there's, there's also, you know, a requirement that they only conserve finger food and can't actually have prepared food there. Which is like prepackaged finger food, um, so, the, I, 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 I think farm winery might be, might be ripe for, for a reinvestigation.
Okay, let's, we'll review it. Okay, let's move on from this, we're good?
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll, we'll bring this up in our next meeting. Uh. Regulation revisions, anything to talk about, we used to put the meeting, I didn't even respond, I was so swamped.
Yeah, I think the next thing we need to do is get together, see what we want to tackle next.
So we just, um, we'll schedule a subcommittee as soon as we can, there's a bunch of regulation revisions, I think. We'd like to visit, um, maximum size of, of, uh. Sheds would reduce setbacks. Increase it slightly from where it is, uh, if. You can think of anything else, anyone on the commissions, you know, reading the minutes. Think of anything that are just a, basically a housekeeping list, this, this issue with regard to the farm winery restrictions. Uh, renewal, I, I would think you would want to revisit that issue.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up right too, so if anyone has an idea, Savannah, John, you see anything you need to hear about, um, that's what's gonna be important. I think that what I, what I need to do is submit a letter. Of what my concerns are, and then recuse myself again as well, at least that portion of it, because. I'd be most definitely biased.
Yeah, I really would like to get a formal.
And that way, yeah, well. Yeah.
We'll introduce you during the open discussion. Thank you. Uh, well, actually, you're in the agenda, I missed that. Okay. Uh, next up is under item nine. Savannah. Our new zoning enforcement officer, we really appreciate you being at the meeting, anything you'd like to say to us?
Um, no, just, you know, I'm happy to see you all, I'm not, I won't be already, but. Thank you.
You too.
And, uh, yeah, I've enjoyed the position so far, I've been working on supporting issues lately, it's kind of been, it's not by my own imagination, but. If you have any concerns or you would like other new things, please feel free to reach out, um. If you have any questions, buddy.
Well, just a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
And I expressed them to you when we met before you were hired.
Yeah.
We really are looking for feedback from you on the regulations. In a way that helps us improve them on an, on an ongoing basis, there are things, if you need. Help with. Regulations being modified to make them more realistic and more consumer-friendly, that's what we want, we are hoping for on an ongoing basis. Is, is frequently as you have some thoughts, and make sure that information gets, be a general email to the commission and. And, uh, John, uh, very informal about that kind of communication, but we're looking for constant feedback. Um, when you hear complaints from the public. About the regulations, I can give you a list of them, that, except gone through any number of site plan reviews and, and, uh, applications. And just a perspective on them, there was, to help make them more simple and more clear. So if we can take. Three pages of regulations and still, still them down in four lines. Would make my day, Justin.
Yep, exactly, yeah, and I appreciate, you know, our conversation we, we met earlier too, um. We don't want to forget why we're here, we're here, ends and begins with the, with residents of the town, um, kind of. Past being the past, we want to make sure that we have good open communication. We're not making people's lives miserable through enforcement, for it makes sense, we're smart, uh, right, um, that we respect people. That we allow people to do things that are reasonable, and that doesn't mean. Everybody works in an active and makes their own decisions and all that stuff, it means that we have good communication and. And we make the changes that we need to, um, and work with you to those, and that's really, I think. You know, my concern is, I really, really appreciate you being here, so, that's a great start.
We need to know what the essence of the enforcement, um, brutality is, is from you, the, the burden that you face. Uh, just. Keeping a spreadsheet with some. Really pertinent data, and if there's. A spreadsheet, and I, I'm saying, well, what about this information, I'll be actively asking you for that info. Feedback can be, yeah, sure, that's easy to include, I didn't know you wanted, or that's not information I readily have, or some, whatever it is, let's just communicate about it. I, I typically about once a month, I'd love to present a spreadsheet to the commission. As to what the open enforcement actions are and where they are, if that's something you're keeping anyway, just a copy of it. If there's anything, you know, a confidential section, leave that, you know, we, we really don't want, um. People to be, we, we, we do have a, an informal policy that complaints are not anonymous, so if somebody wants to file a complaint, they need to file it. In writing with you, leaving a telephone call whether complained about a neighbor, you know, if you take a phone call from somebody. You want to write it up, that's between you and them, not gonna get into that kind of minutia about how we do it, but we do want, want the complaints on record. And I can give you a good example of that, I, in my old neighborhood, somebody complained about. There's only issue with a neighbor. Caused a great deal of tension, they had no idea who complained, and it wasn't me. You know, and so having it on record really is appropriate, if somebody does want to put it on record. You know. And if you notice it going around town, but we don't have zoning police in town, you know, you're not a zoning police person, but if you drive by an obvious flagrant. Issue. Can you?
Thanks, so, the, the way to face your accuser, exactly, so, we, we forget the basic, the basic principle of living in a free society. You have, you have the right to know, and so, so, so it's about somebody using it. And that's what it comes down to, like, we're free people, we should, we should be more, live in that type of society, I think.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, one other thing, many years ago, we had a zoning agent who, when they would read a regulation. And it was really unclear, and fortunately, we do have those on occasion. They would bounce the perspective, um, of, of, uh, get, gain a perspective on the regulations from the commission. Either calling me, or running it by us at a meeting, or just an email notification saying, I'm not clear about this, and I'd rather see. You do that if you're not sure about the intent of a regulation, because if it's, the intent isn't clear. Maybe we can help clarify, and maybe we can also put it on our list of things to clarify for the future, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's really helpful.
Yeah.
Second, yeah, third.
You know, one of the things that has come up that I encountered were the need for as-built surveys.
Yes.
On residential plans. You know, if you're five hundred feet from the nearest property line. Do you really need an as-built survey? For elevations, for example, as opposed to just the location of the foundation. And, you know, having people know early in the process what you're gonna expect at the end of the application. You know, I had to go back and get a site that I was working on, resurveyed three times, when. If I knew that it was gonna need to be resurveyed, that number of times, I would have done it once at the end of the project, but each time, yes, oh, yeah, by this. So, that's the kind of stuff, just trying to save people money. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you have questions, reach out.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, next up. Crog proposed plan of conservation and development. John.
Uh, so Crog has, um, you know, like a, like any municipal, like a municipality or the state, the, the region does. A plan of conservation and development, um. Every, I think they do them on a five-year cycle. Um, and the, the current Crog plan is, um. In draft form, open for comments, um, so I would, you know, encourage everyone to take a look. Um, that, as part of their adoption, they are also going out to every town in the Crog region, the, the Crog. Sort of core land use planning staff. Um. To talk about areas of, you know, um, you know, regional significance, areas where we might be, be looking to take. Um, you know, municipal action that might affect the region, um, and we've scheduled, uh, Crog is, is planning to come out, the Crog team, uh, to meet with. Mark, um. Walter and myself next Tuesday afternoon, that's the. Twentieth. Um, at two thirty, uh, so I mean, if, if, planning, if there are planning commissioners that are interested in, in participating. Um, you're more than welcome, um, but we're gonna, sort of, Mark and I are gonna be focusing on some, some big picture stuff, uh, one thing we're definitely gonna want them to take a look at is. The Route Six, Route sixty-six, uh. Intersection. Which I think is. Doesn't, doesn't function to the benefit of, of Columbia particularly well. Um, and is obviously, you know, a, a, a state highway matter, they own all of that land. Um, and so want, want Crog's transportation people and some of their regional staff to kind of, they'll take a look at this and, and help make this a, a regional priority.
And we're big on recommending a, a, a roundabout. I don't know that there was a lot of enthusiasm for that in our town.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was, that was, that was a while ago, I think it was discussed, it may, it might be, might be worth revisiting, I know, I know. I'll, I'll say, you know, cards on the table, I think both Mark, Walter and I are in favor of that, um, as a, as a serious consideration. Um, but, you know, for someone who uses that intersection multiple times a week, uh, in and around Columbia, it's. It's, it's not my favorite. And it's, it's not a, it's not a particularly. Fantastic way to enter town. But anyway, so what we're talking about that, as well as, um, I'll, I'll, I'll note that in. A meeting I had similarly in Andover a couple of weeks ago, um, the town manager in Andover talked a lot about, um, culvert replacements. Which is sort of a, a, kind of this hidden category of municipal expense that the state has done a very poor job of, of assisting with. Because unless you're, unless it's a, it's a stream crossing of at least twenty feet. Um, which is to say a small bridge, uh, the state really doesn't offer any assistance to, you know, to towns to help with, with culvert replacements and. Culvert replacements, because of, you know, environmental regulation and because of increasing construction costs, can easily, you know, can, can run up into the six figures. Plus, per culvert, um, and that, you know, can, can take a, take, uh, you know, um. Can really bruise your municipal budgets, um, and so we've been, we were talking in Andover, and I know that Mark, Walter and, and Eric Anderson from Andover. Have been talking about, about sort of coordinating efforts on some of these things, so, um, I think assistance on culvert replacement, um, and other infrastructure will be, will be, uh, a topic of discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a link to this being posted online?
To the, uh, the, the regional plan?
The, yeah, the, the draft version of the regional plan?
Yes, um.
If there is, could you just send that out to commission members so that if they want to look at it without attending a meeting, they can?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
John, just real quick on that, how, how do the priorities generally? Get decided on? Like for that, for that meeting, when, when the town is meeting with, with them. Is it generally town manager, town planner, or is it go deeper than that, like, how are the priorities decided?
Uh, it's, it's generally, I mean, it's, it's, that's the people at the meeting, but generally speaking, the, the region. Um, tries to do their best to reflect. The priorities established in each local plan of conservation and development. Um, as, as part of their plan. And, um. And it's, it's largely because. The, the capital region, or any cog. Doesn't, doesn't tend to make a lot of. Independent policy. Statements that, that would run afoul of, of municipal. You know, sort of control or oversight, I, largely because the, the Crog, the policy board of, basically the board of directors of the capital region and any cog. Is made up of the chief elected or chief appointed officials of all of municipalities. So, you know, it's. Um. The, 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 the towns would have to, you know, if there was some conflict, the towns would basically have to agree that there was some regional. Goal here, or regional priority that, that superseded the needs and, and goals of any individual town. Um, and, you know, first selectmen and, and town managers tend not to make those kinds of statements that often. Um. So, uh. You know, so, so the, the regional plan tends to be kind of a bottom-up reflection of, of the local plans, rather than, rather than kind of a new set of. Policy priorities that's, that's kind of pushed down to the towns.
Right.
Thank you.
So that meeting that you, that you were describing, um, that's coming up, is that, is that open to commission members?
Yeah, if you'd like, and, and, I mean, you know, the, it hasn't, I, I, an open invitation hasn't gone out, but, yeah, I, I don't see why not, I think that would be, it'd be, you know.
If I could attend, I might, I'd like to as well, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, next, next Tu- next Tuesday afternoon at two thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay. Um, thank you note from resident. I got. I think, I assume that's from Rhonda Kincaid.
Uh, passion.
From passion, Rhonda, you know, Pat? Or just that? Okay. Uh. One, let me read it to the record, you don't have to put it in the, in this, I say, but, um. Dear P M Z commission members, I attended many of the subcommittee and regular commission meetings. Since August twenty twenty-three, I was especially interested in vote regulation changes to section eight point three accessory dwelling unit and two-family dwellings. As a member of the public, I have been most impressed by. Witnessing democracy in action during the meetings. Both groups were most welcoming. Inviting questions and comments, members listened and considered all that was addressed. I witnessed open and respectful discussions and deliberation before members took action. I thank each one of your commission. For the considerable time and effort. You have given to. Serving. Serving, oh. Serving our town, your capacity as elected officials from both parties, most appreciatively, Pat Chimsik for Cherry Valley, Oklahoma. And I just want to note for the record that Pat and Rhonda Kincaid, um, representing, uh, different, different, uh, interests. Within the community. Put his much work into that subcommittee processes we did, and they were most helpful. And this is a really, I don't know that we had a thank you note before in my, my thirty-eight-year son committed. So I don't need to make light of it, I, I just, it, I'm grateful about it, I did receive a very nice thank you note from Rhonda Kincaid, who was also mailed to my house. Very similar in, in its nature, uh, just appreciative, and, you know. I don't think we need to be thanked for doing the right thing, we, we did work. You know. I give most credit to Justin to keep the process moving forward.
I almost, I almost gotta say, I, I thank them, and I thank the, the public for the, for the amount of involvement they gave us for that meeting, I wish they were here, we didn't have beer every time.
Yeah, they're, they were such a.
You know, for tangible.
Good morning, it's nice to have you. You know, I, I appreciate it, um, I'm gonna move on from that, commission open discussion, I have something to bring up to everybody, I took. Some initiative without prior authorization from the commission, after the most recent, um. Uh, number of algae blooms that. Plumulate his experience. I took it on myself to go to the lake management advisory committee meeting this past week. And I initiated a phone call to them and said, you know. The current nutrient allocation. The current nutrient allocation plan, even though it's implemented by planning and zoning, that is not a product of ours. It's a product of your advisory committee, what approximately twenty-five years ago, I.
Hey, was that long?
I believe it was twenty-five, twenty-two years ago in that range. Uh, so. I, I said. If you think that we can do anything to help, we need to hear from you. And I think to a person, members of the commission likely are very supportive of that, but I can't speak for members of the commission. I can only speak for myself. I said, you know, we're. One of two legislative vessels in town. And. It may be that our recommendation to you, if you're asking to do something, is a, it's a better order of selection approach data. Our minds are wide open, and if you need our help, please ask us. I said, really, what I, I tried to do is start to catalyze a discussion, catalyze action. And it started from the lake managing, uh, management advisory committee. Um, in the past. And we simply, at their request. Came forward and put regulations in process that we felt were most effective implemented during a building review phase, which is what. It was within the range of our authority. So that being said. I said, if you need our help, let's have an open, open discussion about this and maybe we can form a joint subcommittee. That represents, that is from planning zoning, uh. Lake management advisory and even the Columbia Lake Association, whether it's, you know. Their ad hoc members, cause we, the subcommittee can't have non-members as formal members, however we wanna do it. But if you need action, ask us.
So what did they say?
They, they were so appreciative that I initiated the discussion. Uh. I think they need to know that they have a lot of allies to try and maintain the health of the lake. And I don't think they questioned it, but the more that they hear it, the more I'm trying to catalyze timely action. And if, if that's a review of the nutrient allocation. Uh, table and the, the implementation, you know, that's going to come from them and the science from consultant that they bring forth. That isn't likely us, I said, if. If you think there's in some way inland weapons can help you, I'd suggest you approach them and ask them. About that. But I want, I don't wanna leave anything off the table.
Is there any sense from anyone that action does need to be taken?
Yes. But right now, the phosphorus levels have been increasing incrementally year by year in the lake. Which is what the nutrient allocation, uh, uh. Plan, it was meant to contain over time, we kept it in check for a long time. But the intensive redevelopment of the lake most recently. Um, and the clearing of foliage in the lake watershed has allowed that phosphorus level to rise slightly. For a long time, it was going down incrementally from what I understand, because those regulations helped. Reduce the, the, the outflow from the lake watershed into the, um. The, the lake itself, and that is changed mostly in some, and some part of the algae boom may be related to. Environmental issues that are beyond our control. But I, I, I wanna make sure that we don't leave anything that's within the realm of our control unaddressed.
Well, I think it's completely appropriate to make sure that we're communicating and that we have that open invitation. By, by concern, we could just be a general, I don't know, concerns, make sure that we're not. Just making decisions because something changed without knowing why it changed.
Oh, it's all based on the science, you know, they have a, okay, a man, a lake, um, lake, uh, quality consultant. Based, you know, an accredited lake, uh, consultant. It was, um. I, you, the, the, that's changed over the years who that is. And, yeah, I don't think we would react to anything that is in science base.
Do they go as far as actually creating a cause and effect? So the, the fact is an increase in phosphorus, or we should do, but do they know the cause?
When you say that, you're referring to the lake manager?
Whoever their experts are, that you just referenced.
Yes, there was most definitely, um, testimony at the time we implemented the regulations. That phosphorus from the watershed caused by. Phosphorus outflow from the watershed into the lake. Was potentially decreasing the quality of the water and increasing the chance for algae blooms. And so we took actions to reduce the phosphorus through controls on the development and requirement for mitigation. Uh, best practice management, uh, within the lake watershed, and over time, that phosphorus level did go down, 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 down. Then X number of years ago, and I don't know what that is, the phosphorus level started to increase. And it seemed to coincide with the intensive redevelopment of the seasonal properties and overhanging trees to. Lots cleared with lawns.
I, I, I think what. The point is, you said seemed to, yeah, and, and the, the, for there to be science involved in it, before we noticed it. If, for example, the, the phosphorus was, was a direct impact of something that was happening in the way of our watershed. Because of, you know, farms or whatever. That might be really challenging thing for us to be involved in, and it would be important to know, is that what's happening, or is it coming from laws? Yeah. Yeah, and it's not fair that it's, it's happening for now, but those, those would be my concerns, yeah, we, we can say, well, we make an assumption, but. Right, well, they're, they're totally different, two totally different efforts to say. We need to try and implement something that will protect the lake from a perspective of lawns immediately in the neighborhood. Then to say, well, we know now. So, please don't get me wrong, I'm just saying that. Knowing the science to the point where you know where it's coming from. Is every bit as important as knowing that when it did come, it damaged the water flow. And yeah, I get that phosphorus is, that is a negative to, to our water, but before we even could even. Try to plunge in, we'd have to know really where it came from.
That, that discussion will come down the road.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, is, is that what you were? Exactly what I was, yeah, because we, we could go through the effort. You know, half understanding or making an assumption and just make changes and it make no positive effect whatsoever, so I think. It's just, it's just a statement to say that when we get to that point.
Time for that, yeah, I'm not gonna cut it off.
No, no, I know, yeah.
But there'll be a time, I know that we'll analyze anything that comes our way with, uh. Scientific method at the forefront of our minds and lake health also at the forefront of our minds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone has the same goal. And then if we're going to implement it, it's gonna have to pass our students. Uh, so I did, I did go out on a, I didn't go out on a limb, I was careful not to represent the phosphor anything but mine as an individual. But I encourage them to come forward to us if they need our help. And because we are the mechanism of the current implementation of the only real control on this. And then. And it could be, be that it's a combination, combination of inland regulations, I'll stay out of that. And. Building zoning, uh, regulations that help. Whatever, whatever needs to be addressed, we're open, I said, to considering whatever.
If there's any question about whether or not you thought you did the right thing, I'm absolutely in favor.
Think of the right thing. Yeah, I just, I didn't wanna wait, I saw this algae boom and I said, we need to start this discussion now.
Yeah.
And so I went to the next lake management meeting, I intended to send an email out to everybody saying I'm going to the lake management meeting. Life happened.
Well, that, that would have been the idea, but still the right thing.
Some of it. Like, like we're talking about the science, some of it's caused by elevated temperatures too.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's a combination of a few things.
So, so, let's, let's see, you know, the science, um, we're gonna ask them to provide the science, they have the paid consultant. We're simply a method of implementing specific action that we are authorized to do. And it may be that we aren't the real people to address this, likely we, we would be, but we don't know. Um, hey, John, one other question I have in open discussion, I assume that the appeal period went by on the Cars Mill Road. Uh, wedding venue application without another appeal being filed. There was a two week appeal period?
Yeah, no, I, they. My, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna bring up my last conversation with, um. Attorney Slater about this. He had said. Uh, yeah, they had fifteen days to file the appeal, but they can also ask for permission for an extension, which is generally readily granted because it's a short time. Um. He, he said, said they did file a petition for certification from the appeals court, so they, they, they are attempting to bring it to the appellate court. Um. And the town is opposing, the appellate court isn't, isn't automatic, they can, they can agree or deny. What I, I believe they call cert. Um, so they can agree to hear it or, or, or refuse to hear it, and in which case, if they refuse to hear it, then, then that's that. Um, but Ken said, uh, we won't know for a couple of months if the court decides to take it up. Um, so. Yeah, they, they did.
Yeah.
They did get through, and that was in the end of June, so it was about a month and a half ago, um. So it still may be a, a, another month or so. Before we know, but.
I have to be a business owner and be waiting, yeah, or I think it'll happen in a few months.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, we've talked, we've talked, well, Greg has left the, the call, but we've talked to, um. The, the developers, um, in this interim time, and, you know, they understand, they are able to. Proceed, but they must understand that anything they're proceeding with is at risk. Um, so I think they, they were, you know, probably planning to just, you know, do some grading and, and maybe some site preparation. Um, but weren't going to do any vertical construction until everything was locked down.
If you get an awareness that we have any threshold of potential action, let us know what that is when we get there, if you could.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Anything else anyone wants to bring up?
Is it appropriate, I, I have a couple of questions about Hearthstone, I'm sorry to be prepared for next meeting, um. What is the size of the building now?
Eighteen hundred square.
Eighteen, okay. And this four thousand, it's listed here, is that a number you came up with?
We had a subcommittee. Um. Is, is this appropriate amount?
I think it's background information.
Yeah, I do feel like I need, but at the time, at the time we put a subcommittee together, um, to talk about, it was actually in general was farm regulations.
Farm stand.
Because we had, the, the commission had already approved the farm winery under the regulation of. Farm stand, because it was a farm-produced product made from farm, farm goods. And, and kinda shoehorned it in. Which is, thank goodness for me, I was happy that they did it. But then we went, we went back and we put a subcommittee together to look at all the farm regulations, because. We were, we were interested in farm stores, um, country, you know, country stores, um, how, how the. The whole farmer's marketing situation, uh, would, was being used. Um, so we had this subcommittee and we met maybe a dozen times, I would say, um. And Paul sat in. Our town planner at the time sat in, and we threw ideas at the wall, we talked most of it through. And Paul would bring, you know, bring back draft, 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 draft. Some stuff showed up late in draft. And being directly impacted by it, um. I had a, a, that kinda. Not. Have a lot to say about it, because I, because I was, because I, I mean, there's a degree of bias, man, I. Had to. Do the right thing. Um, so where. You know, things like finger food and the, um, you know, the. The approval, the two, the two-year approval process, I think that's slipped in, in the eleventh hour because they were, we discussed it. But it became a question of whether or not you, you actually do. Do that or you, or you don't do that, or policy or this or. Um, but it was. Yeah, so.
What's the, what, what's the thought process? To limit you to finger food?
Um, there really wasn't it.
Okay.
There really wasn't, it was something that was kinda like I said, slipped in. I, and then I, I thought to myself, you know, it's not really, it doesn't really do anything to us. Because we weren't, we're in a restaurant business and we never gave it any thought. It wasn't until the state by, by, um. Um, our governor played, uh, in, in the work. That changed, um, once it changed, but, uh, interpreted. The food service licensing. In the state of Connecticut, um, to, to, as soon as, as soon as he, with COVID, um. Starting to look at. How. How the, um, cleanliness and the food service, this food service was scrutiny. Times like crazy during COVID, um. He put an executive order through to, to say that. Um, rep that, um, wineries, one had to have food service licenses, which we all thought we had to anyway. Um, there were a few towns that, that didn't, okay, Lebanon didn't. Um, but he said very clearly that you had to have a food service license. I don't think Bob Chipkin had one in Coventry either, um, but food service license was a mandate. Um, because it is food. And that way, the health department could. Help and would have a, have a requirement to be arms deep in the cleanliness and the upkeep and the coded. You know, rules and regulations. Um, so, and, and then he interpreted the food service license to say that you have to have food. And so everyone was scrambling, all the wineries, breweries, anybody who was in the business of the farm, you know, farmers. Kind of, well, yes, farmers. Were in a panic to, to come up with a way to have food, so food crops became very popular, um, and. We were actually visited by the state of Connecticut, um, and had them, um, they had a, a representative come out. Enforcement representative come out to look at our menu. And we said, we don't have a menu because. We're, we understood we were finger food, um, we do food replatter, is that a finger food? Well. I'm not sure, we want you to have meals. Uh, well, we, we, we don't have, we're not, we're not a kitchen, we don't wanna prepare meals, we, what we really like to do is have it be simple. Let's sell our wine, because that's the business we're in. And they said, well, no, you, you have to have meals, you're gonna have to have bag lunches. And they actually suggested to us, the enforcement agents suggested to us that we have peanut butter and jelly sandwiches in a bag. With a bag of chips and whatever, call it a meal.
You kidding?
Yes, this, this was all part of, uh, uh, whether it was a misinterpretation, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say it was or wasn't, but. Um, our governor was trying to do the right thing during COVID. And, um, and there were some, um. Some, uh, understandings or some, um, interpretations of the. The, the law and the, you know, executive order that led us down the road of having to have food. And so we had full meals. And we struggled with it, but here are regulations that's finger food. What do you do? You know what I mean, so?
Yeah, I know about the jokes, Savannah, but you might have been the peanut butter and jelly pop.
No, no, it was a state representative, she lived on Lake, okay, yeah, she was. And, uh, she tried like crazy, she really, it was, it was a, a question, we all wondered if, if it was being interpreted correctly. But it was, see, we have a subcontracting help. We have the governor who was trying to do the right thing during COVID, and the other thing is that by executive order, I think that. Towns had to relax, things like sidewalk service, you know, tables out in front and tents and parkamas and all that stuff. And, and so they, everyone's trying to do the right thing, keep these businesses in business, but at the same time, have somebody policing. You know, hygiene, cleanliness, whatever. So they, they think that the intention, at least we were told, the intention was that we could get. The health departments more. You know, armed even. That piece of it, if the, between food service licenses and brush. We. Required.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
So that answers that question.
I guess, I mean. If there is no executive session, I don't think anything we ask about with regards to legal issues is anything but publicly discussed applied. So I said. You know, we, every, if I don't believe we currently do. Anything we'll, we'll hope for, uh, is that updated on the sad situation on Route Six. As the enforcement action, that could just be a simple, if, you know, any updates you can give us in the future or not now, be appreciated. For that, I, I'm gonna return. All those favorites. Savannah, thank you. We did get it out of here unless it's family.
That's impressive. I have conservation meetings that usually go after. And have less.